It's definitely.
Before we do the pledge of allegiance, would you like to do that now?
Sure.
Okay, so Dan has been working incredibly hard to up our.
Our visuals here to make us look very.
I love it.
And he has secured us this amazing banner for our meetings.
Give credit to Paula and Ryan who made this happen. See if we can find a way to make this.
I think.
Under, underneath.
Yeah.
I appreciate the effort.
And then put the cord over the sign so it's not in front of it.
Wow.
Go down here.
I think you get my vote just for doing this.
Here. Thank you so much, Dan.
Thank you, Dan.
Appreciate that. Feel very official now. We need to once again work on our name tags and then.
Then we'll be there. So now we're going to go ahead and raise, stand for the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I do not see anybody for public hearing unless there's anybody here that does anything for public hearing. So we're going to go ahead and move on. We have some approval of minutes. February twenty-third, February twenty-fifth, sorry, are the minutes. But I feel like I maybe have missed them in my packet.
I move we approve minutes of February twenty-fifth, just to get the discussion started.
Second.
Did we get them? I don't see them printed.
But I see them in, online.
I see them, yeah, I see them on the agenda, I do not see them in paper format, so. If we could, Shannon, if I could request that we just make sure that they get included in our paper.
Sure.
Packet. In case people are only going by the paper packet. Um.
Oh, yeah, and I don't even have access, so, okay, I can share with you.
Are we all set with them otherwise?
She's just sharing access to me for a second. I'm going to have them now. Yep, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from Tuesday, February twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five.
We already did.
Oh.
And it's seconded, so we're discussing.
We have a motion and a second.
Yep, you were just waiting for me to read them, so.
Waiting for everybody to be ready. That's fine.
Okay, that works.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we're going to move on to the warrants. We've got payroll warrant and then some account payable, so we'll take payroll first. We're number one-one-nine, I need a motion and a second.
So moved.
All second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any noes? Um, next is accounts payable, we're going to take. Caitlin, there's nothing there for food service.
Yeah, there were no food service warrants since the last meeting.
Oh, it's just sitting there as an empty spot?
Yep.
Okay, so we'll take the elementary separate from secondary? So elementaries ten-twenty-eight and ten-twenty-nine?
Oh, you want to.
No, start moved.
All second.
Okay, any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any abstentions or noes? Sometimes it's hard to hear everybody's voice. Um, secondary?
I'll make a motion to accept warrant number one-one-one-three for secondary.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any abstentions?
I abstain.
Noes, perfect.
Great, thanks. Moving on to gifts or grants, do we have either?
No gifts or grants.
Okay, report of the Gil Montague representative. No representative present. We are going to need to check in on those representatives because this is at least the second month in a row we've not had a representative for either Gil, Montague, or the tech school. Collaborative for Educational Services report.
There is not one at this time because the next meeting is next Wednesday, March twenty-sixth at six P.M. So I will have one for next meeting.
Okay, regionalization update. Our representative is not here, I know that we did get some information emailed, it was, it appeared to be kind of just a summary of what's happened so far. So we'll be looking to once again reach out to our regionalization representative as well to make sure that they are still interested in being our representative. Capital planning committee update. Did you guys meet?
We did meet, it was very quick, there were no, please, anyone else on the committee come back and correct me if they're wrong, but there were not really any updates, things were submitted to the town, we're waiting to bring the, is it MSB?
MSBA.
MSBA, um, information to the town to vote on? And then it can get submitted, is that the process?
Yes, as far as I know, the select board has voted in the same language that you used.
Oh, perfect.
We're just waiting on the document that has to also kind of share that language and to be able to upload that to the MSBA.
Awesome. Um, and then we made a decision that we weren't going to meet next month?
Yeah, we have a tentative meeting, but likely.
Unless.
We have a placeholder, but if we don't have any updates, we will not have that meeting on April second.
We're still trying to find someone to inspect playgrounds, so if anyone knows.
Yes, if you know of anyone.
Inspects playgrounds, um, and then working on those, thank you Caitlin for those applications, and we're just going to keep kind of keeping an eye on those things and everyone will provide updates and if we, we have a standing monthly meeting on the schedule and if we need it, we'll use it and if not, we'll just keep going on.
What was the progress on the blinds for summer or next summer, what was that?
So we have to wait until annual town meeting to know that we're going to get the funding to be able to do the capital project and once we have that, we can start on the blind project over the summer.
Good. Okay, that concludes your update.
Yep.
Um, superintendent's report.
Alrighty, so Irving Elementary School has begun the search for our new principal, the process was, is being facilitated by Director of Student Support Amy Langton and had representatives from all stakeholder groups. Interviews were held on March thirteenth and the committee recommendations were forwarded to the office of the superintendent. The next steps are community meet and greet with candidates, reference checks, and interview with the superintendent. Those things have all been scheduled, the staff will have an opportunity to meet with both finalists, Walter Houston and Beth Gannon tomorrow afternoon, then there is about an hour break between the staff opportunity to meet and the community opportunity to meet, which will be at five o'clock, and during that time, I will be interviewing both candidates so that we can expedite the process and make good use of the time that they're in the building. And then I complete the reference checks and we are going to have a feedback form to garner feedback from the community and the staff, and I'll take all those things into consideration and make a selection.
Question, could you go over how one of those sessions is going to operate? I understand there will be two different rooms with different candidates in each room.
Yep.
Or, but, yeah, and, and do we filter back, you know, all will be here for just the, at the evening time?
Mm-hmm.
So do we just filter back and forth between?
Yep, you're welcome to go back and forth between the two, some may, and Beth and I discussed this with Candor, people may have more questions, you know, staff may spend longer in Principal Houston's format because they may have questions where they may already know those answers about Principal Gannon because they've worked with her. So it'll be informal session allowing them a chance to meet with the candidates.
And are we going to pick up our feedback forms tomorrow night?
So it's a QR code and you will scan it and then it will ask what stakeholder group you're from and then it's two very simple questions, preference and fee, you know, opportunity to give a narrative.
Could there be some paper for some possible parents that.
We certainly can, absolutely.
I mean, I can use them, but I'm not sure.
Yep, no, we absolutely can, yep.
And on the QR code, is there a way that there is only one submission or?
Yep.
Okay, and during the earlier time when the staff is meeting the candidates, are they, is it the same format? Are they in two separate places in the staff?
Yes.
Okay.
Going to have snacks? No, forget that.
I was, I wasn't going to.
Yeah, I'm just remembering.
Want me to bring some cookies?
I'm remembering the superintendent's.
Well, my thought is that.
That was very well.
We will have another, another introduction opportunity when a candidate is selected and at that point, we will do, just like, you know, we've done it in the past, but if you want snacks, I will be all about snacks.
No, I was just remembering what was at Swift River, that was very nice.
Those were nice cookies, I will concur.
Now you may lose my train of thought. Alright, so now some U twenty-eight updates. Swift River hosted a union-wide parent engagement night with Dr. Stuart Ablon. Dr. Ablon is a leading expert in child psychology and teaches parents, teachers, and clinicians about a different approach around troubling childhood behavior with a focus on skill building. The event was funded through our, some of our title grants and had an in-person and virtual option. We got a lot of positive feedback about that and it was well-attended. The rollout of the online absence management system frontline is underway across all the union schools. At the JSC meeting last night, I shared two reports, the report of entry findings and my mid-cycle evaluation update. And I was invited to be a panelist for a DESI-sponsored roundtable to discuss equity, rural leadership, and transitioning into a superintendency. The audience was candidates enrolled in DESI's Influence One Hundred Leadership Program, which is a superintendent licensure program aimed at promoting equity in education. Legislative updates, the Joint Committee on Ways and Means has scheduled the fiscal year twenty-six budget hearing focused on local aid for Monday, March twenty-fourth at eleven A.M. The hearing will take place at the UMass Campus Center. Stakeholders in all rural schools have been encouraged to attend to share with legislators the unique challenges that are faced by rural school districts. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education recently voted to expand some charter school programs that could potentially impact Union Twenty-eight systems. The Pioneer Valley Chinese Immersion Charter School in Hadley has received permission to add one hundred seats to their enrollment.
Wow.
Hmm.
On March seventh, two thousand twenty-five, the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education received written notification that the agreement between the United States Department of Agriculture's Agricultural Marketing Service and DESI for the Local Food to Schools and Childcare Cooperative Agreement would be terminated. The AMS has determined that, there's a lot of acronyms here, the LFSCC, which funds Northeast Food for Schools, no longer effectively matches federal agency priorities and that the termination of funds is appropriate. Termination letters were sent, that's about twelve million dollars in Massachusetts. DESI has said to school systems that if you're interested, if we can find the money, sign up, but the consensus is that that'll be a pretty low priority for DESI, especially given that they are not sure what they may have to juggle for funds, so we'll sign up for it, but I don't anticipate that. And Irving did not utilize this program this past year, but they have utilized it in the past as have all schools in the union. So it is the first of, of what I would guess, it probably could be several cuts coming our way. But no immediate impact to our budget as we didn't utilize it last year. And that is my report. Questions, comments?
It's National Agricultural Week and they're cutting all of the fresh foods and vegetable programs.
I know, and it really, you know, it's unfortunate, it's a great opportunity and it's not just for students, it's local farmers that are getting to provide their local goods within a small transportation cost area. And so.
Farm to school.
Yep.
Yep.
So perhaps DESI will find, find the funds and we will be on that pipeline list if they do, but I'm not optimistic about that.
Do you have any idea why you didn't use it this last year?
I couldn't tell you because I wasn't here during the filing time and it typically would start in the superintendent's office, so I don't know.
I'm not sure why it wasn't there.
All right, thank you. Um, Director of Finance and Operations report.
So the Massachusetts School Building Authority Statement of Interest, this is the update on that. Both votes for the SOI submission, the statement of interest, to the MSBA have been completed. The final document for the select board vote is the only missing component before final signatures can be completed. So there was a link sent out to the select board chair, the superintendent, and the school committee chair for the closed, closed school signatures, that's confirming the district has not closed a school recently. We are the only school in the district, I think it's an easy one to sign off on. And then when that's in, I get the final document, then I will be able to have the final signature go out to the same three people and once that signature's done, we can submit the SOI, which is due on Friday. Irving Elementary and Secondary budgets, the last meeting in February, the school committee voted for final adoption of the FY twenty-six budget. Unless there are any amendments, no sudden incredible changes to what's projected. Our final step will be to bring the budget to the Irving voters, the annual town meeting in May. To piggyback on Shannon's update on the frontline absence management, we've officially gone live with frontline absence management. All employees can now enter upcoming absences, check available leave balances, and be linked to substitutes through the software. This has ended our past system of submitting paper forms, requesting absences, and manually entering in Google Sheets to keep track of absence balances. And finally, the current school year fiscal year budget and reviewing the current year's budget in our system, kind of line by line. We are on track to close out the final quarter, which starts in April, with a small cushion for unanticipated expenses, end-of-year field trips, and increases in substitute trends and some other factors. So we know that the end of the year, there are typically more field trips to fund, more staff might be absent. There are some things, but with what we have right now and looking through and in kind of manually encumbering, we are on track to close out the year with a small cushion.
I do have some questions about our current budget.
Sure.
So currently, we have some fairly significant overages, meaning that we have a deficit in our budget lines. And so I'm curious about the sped transportation.
Do we have a line number?
No, well, I can give you the, it's on the first page, almost all the way to the bottom.
Okay.
So most of that expense will move to circuit breaker, but it is easier for us and I believe for the town to be able to move it all at once. So we have, I think, forty thousand for circuit breaker that we budgeted to, to move from that expense line over to the circuit breaker line and a lot, there's a good chunk for the special education tuition line also.
So you're saying back in the fall, I know we did that for this coming year, fiscal twenty-six, but for fiscal twenty-five, you knew that there was going to be a deficit, that we were going to run in the deficit and backfill with circuit breaker?
Yes.
Because there's not enough.
We had budgeted for circuit breaker, circuit breaker to cover some of those, those accounts.
And so what about, we also have a pretty significant deficit in specialist teacher salaries regular and specialist teachers sped, I'm looking at that, so that's more towards the top third?
Got it.
Yes, so those are, we'll have to look into the account and make sure that everything's being taken out appropriately. I don't think we've had any adjustments to those personnel this year, but sometimes we have something, we have a salary in one line and then it switches to another line, that's what throws one account, one line over and another line under, but our salary lines are still running as we expected.
Okay, because I mean, we're, that's, those two lines are over eighty-eight thousand, probably ninety thousand by the time you do the change, which seems like a significant amount, and I'm not seeing really where somebody, where another line is over by that significant amount. So I, I would like a little bit more clarity on those two lines.
Sure.
It's like, don't recall hearing that we hired anybody and all contracts have been, you know, were settled at the time of this, so we would know how much everybody was being paid.
Yep. I can get back to you with that.
And then the other overage was the teacher aide sped. Which, again, did we hire somebody that I'm not recalling because that's, again, over forty-three thousand eight hundred dollars negative.
So sometimes over the course of the year, a position might adjust from being a general education paraprofessional to a special education, so if that salary changes lines, it's not what we anticipated with the budget. But I, we are still, I think, in line with what we had budgeted for, for paraprofessionals.
Shannon, are you aware, or Beth, are you aware of a, of a paraprofessional that went from a general education paraprofessional to a special education paraprofessional?
I'd have to, I'd have to consult with Amy. I'd have to consult, I don't want to, I don't, I don't know that information.
Okay.
And I'm not sure Beth would know where they originally started, she may know where, where they were, but I could consult with Amy.
Okay.
All right, up to principals report.
Can I?
Sorry, before we, sorry.
Oh, we're not done yet, sorry.
So we, I have, I'm not sure if you want me to continue doing the breakdown of all the expenditures because right now you have the expenditure report and you have access to all of the warrants. So it was seeming kind of redundant to have that in my director's report and so I'd like to ask if you would like that to continue, if it is valuable information or whether the expenditure report and the warrants are enough to kind of let you know where the.
You mean the individual breakdown that says, so for me personally, because it just quickly highlighted, it helped me better understand, because the warrants are not easy to follow and I'm like scanning that things match, but I can't always see like full receipt or what it went for or, because it's coded a different way and I don't know where that code goes. So I, I personally feel like it's really helpful to be able to like see where the money's going and ask questions that way, but if it's not the general consensus, I don't have to make.
I would want to have these continue and as I mentioned to you, I'd like to see them on, online ahead of time because then at the meeting here, I can enlarge it.
Sure.
Yes.
Make it a little easier for me to read.
We had asked for all of that to be given ahead of time with the whole packet, so if we could go back to that.
Okay.
I think they are linked to the agenda, if you go to the agenda and under Director of Finance Operations Report, it'll have the two expenditures. If you click on that.
They're linked on, on mine, so I, I'm not sure the one that I have has it linked.
It, I have it linked, but I know I just had to request access for it, so I think access to, I think making sure we have access to all the links when it's sent out would be helpful.
So this is when, you're looking at the agenda?
Yep, and so anything that's highlighted in blue.
Okay, alright, so.
Is a hyperlink, yeah.
Yep. Yeah, no, I would like to make sure it comes out.
Can you open it on yours, Mark, because I'm thinking, I shared my copy, so that my.
Yeah, it, it does come out.
Yeah, I think that's why you had to request access, because it's my copy.
Oh, okay.
It's not the one that was in your, sent on your, if that makes sense.
Okay.
Yep.
Mackenzie, I am going to circle back to that question, I am going to talk with Amy because I see that where we are have a forty-three dollar deficit.
Forty-three thousand.
Overage on forty-three thousand in teacher aide, special ed. We're under budget by forty-four thousand.
Yep.
In the regular, so that seems like a pretty comparable balance, so I will confirm that with Amy, but that could very well be what happened, that we anticipated someone being a regular ed, paraprofessional, and then they will reassign to, to special ed.
Mm-hmm.
Great.
Now, did the, the overs and potential unders work out all right, or are we running over or are we running under?
We're running under right now, we've kind of made an effort the last couple of years to really budget for the needs because I know there were a few years in the past that we were, you know, at the end of the year, we had a couple hundred thousand dollars so left at the end of the year, so we've been pretty mindful and conservative with our budgeting and we're getting, and we're probably at the point right now, that what we're budgeting for is equivalent to what we're expending.
But does that total out anywhere in our report?
So, one issue with the report, and so there is, because we are a school union, all of the Union Twenty-eight lines, that's at the bottom of the report.
Yeah, yeah.
Have salaries that we're unable to encumber, we can't encumber them because they're, they're actually accounts payable expenses because you're paying Swift River. because you're paying Swift River back for the salaries that they paid. But since they're also labeled as payroll, we're not able to encumber them through accounts payable. We're not able to encumber them through payroll. So we do, I do a manual encumbrance to check in through the year to make sure that we're on track with those made. So you'll notice that on any of the Union 28 salaries, mine, Shannon's, anyone else for the central office, there is no encumbrance and we're unable to have an encumbrance. So we have to kind of manually put that in there and see and get a glimpse of where we are for the year. And as of today, we are on track. We have, I think, about a seventy thousand dollar amount that we can anticipate would be left at the end of the year if all spending trends continue. I don't know what spikes in some of the, the lines might look like for the end of the year. I don't know if we have, let's say, a, you know, I use fuel, even though I know where we are with fuel, but if we have a a large invoice coming.
I understand that. I mean, it would be, it's just, it would be nice to, to see that information, particularly for us less educated in numbers, to be able to, to look and say, yeah, I mean, because I am familiar with, with an approximate figure. Number, you know, an approximate wiggle that says, you know, we have this much in wiggle room. So it would be nice to, you know, flip to the bottom and say approximately what you just said, instead of having to ask for it each time. But that's, that's much better than it has been in the past. I appreciate that.
One more question before we move off of this, just because I'm looking at it again. So the sped tuition for other schools, again, we have a hundred and thirty-four thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. Hundred and thirty-four thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven dollars. I'm still not sure I said that right. Hundred and thirty-four, yeah, five hundred and sixty-seven, sorry. Back page, middle, the, middle of the page.
Sped tuition now schools, programs of the schools?
Yeah, so where is that? Are you anticipating pulling that out of Circuit Breaker? I'm unclear as to why that's so off as well.
Yes, there's eighty-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars that will come from Circuit Breaker. That, once we have accumulated those expenses, then we can do it in one, one transfer of those expenses are now Circuit Breaker expenses.
Okay, but you encumbered a hundred and seventy-five thousand when you only had a hundred and fifteen in the budget, right? And so I'm, I'm not hearing how you're going to cover the whole amount with Circuit Breaker compared to, I mean, when you add the programs with other school, this line, and our sped transportation line, what is in our Circuit Breaker account?
I don't know. Off the top of my head, I can look into it.
You, you don't, you don't even have a ballpark?
No.
Okay, because I, I'm just not sure we have this and much amount in our Circuit Breaker line to be covering both these lines that are quite extensively over our budget.
I think we are, what we had budgeted for was in line with what we are receiving in Circuit Breaker. I can actually...
That may be, but I'm not sure that that's what the actual costs are coming out to be.
So we're receiving a hundred and seventy-six thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars in Circuit Breaker.
One seventy-six?
Yep, two forty-one.
All right.
We just got to cover this plus the other line.
Plus forty-seven, and that's encumbered for the entire year?
That amount's encumbered for the year.
That'll cover the rest of the year?
Yes, I believe so. I'd have to look into the encumbrance.
Okay. Okay, yep, you get back to me with those numbers.
So on the elementary budget?
That's, I'm, I'm all done with it. Do you have other questions?
Well, I had a question. It said, one of the things, unless there are any amendments, I don't know that there will be. And the discussion was only last night at the select board meeting. Has town administrator, anyone contacted you about any requests for possible adjustment to our budget?
No.
No? Okay. Well, I expect they will. I'll leave it to them to how much they're working on, a variety of numbers, but there may be a request for a small reduction. I don't know.
Okay. Cross that bridge. All right, is that all, are you all set now?
Yep.
And Dan, you're all set? Okay. All right, now we're up to principal report.
Okay, fortunately, there seemed to be a small tech glitch this week, so I'm back on tethered cord. So we have our similar talking points from every month, except for this month. Our number three talking point will be looking at school-wide data, which was a request from last month. So we will start with enrollment, move through school council, do our adding of our school, looking at school data, and then a community update. Our enrollment numbers, we have added a fourth, so we have a tenth member to our pre-K four class. We're very excited to welcome a young gentleman to our class. And we have gotten projected enrollment numbers for next year for pre-K three, pre-K four, and kindergarten. So that includes what is now six students in the pre-K three program, three students, two returning and one new in the pre-K four program, and twelve students in kindergarten, which would include the ten returning and two new. Earlier this evening, I was able to do a tour for a new member, a new resident of Irving, who has a three-year-old. So we're very excited and he seemed to really enjoy the classroom and the program here. So I'm hoping he'll be joining us as well, and that would push that number to a total of ten kids in the preschool for next fall.
And all, oh, sorry.
Go right ahead. Yes, no, sorry.
And all of these children have registered, like they have submitted all their stuff and they're good to go. These aren't like, you know, students we know that are out there.
No, no, these are students that we have paperwork on. There are some students that are finishing up pieces that we're missing, some medical documents.
We've talked to them. We've gotten some stuff for them.
Gotten portions or complete packets from all of these students, so we're still working on.
That's good.
Yes, a few pieces of paperwork here and there.
Okay. Yes.
Are you saying that there are, there may be some more students, or are you saying these are the students?
These are the students that are these ages for Irving for next year.
Unless somebody shows up.
Unless someone new moves into town.
Yeah.
Yes. Like, like today's family that I met, I met the father today. They had just moved in over the weekend and he was looking to see about preschool, so.
If I could just veer for one second, so
Sure.
Shannon, I'd asked you to look into, do you want to talk about that now, or do you want to?
You had asked me a couple of things. Which one are you talking about?
To look at wording for preschool to be out of district.
Non-resident.
Non-resident. Not school choice.
We can just, we can set two different rates. One for, and other than that, it would be the same. Preschool is not part of school choice. So if we have an influx of Irving residents and we're not able to offer it, we would, we would not offer it for out of, out of town residents. So it's, it's as simple as just making sure in our preschool policy, we have two rates. The rates would be set and then recommended for a school committee to agree to, if that makes sense.
So I would like to request that the policy committee look at adding a, a section to the policy, to the preschool policy related to having a tuition rate for out-of-district residents, out-of-district students.
So, yeah, so I think what will happen is the, the policy will say that we accept them, but I don't think you put the rate in the policy, because it could, you want a policy that lasts regardless of economy and then.
But we have to put some sort of wording in there about that.
Yep.
So you're saying you want us to come up with yet, with another pol, well, or amend the existing?
Amend the existing. I think we don't have to come up with a second. I think we could just amend by adding.
We just add a paragraph about, you know,
Accepting. Yep.
Based on enrollment at the discretion of, you know, superintendent's recommendation to the school committee. And I think it doesn't have to be something that's binding every year. I think we could put something in there that just says, if we have a year that we are going to allow out of non-resident preschoolers, there's a different rate.
And when will we, I don't see it on the agenda today, so when will we be discussing school choice seats?
So it'll be on next month's agenda. I wanted to first, you'll see later in the agenda, we've requested the official census. Gillie does a really great job and we have a pretty good handle, but we want to make sure that we have accurate figures.
Yep.
And, and I think then I'll, I'll be presenting my thoughts about it, and then this committee will make the decision about what they want to do.
Okay.
And, oh, without sharing too much information, because it's a small group of children, can part of that presentation just be like the needs of the children too? Because I know ten might look small on paper, but if you go into a classroom, it might feel like thirty, you know what I mean?
No, because it has to be a blind, you decide that you're going to do, you can't ask, you're talking about our current students?
Yes.
All right.
Yeah, yeah, no, like.
Factor that in when you're looking at whether we should have school choice.
I think that will be part of my recommendation to you. You may see a small class size and I'm saying, I'm not recommending.
I just want to make sure we keep that in our forefront. Because on paper, it might look great, and if you go visit, it might feel like there's thirty in there and there's a lot going.
People who are here, trust me, that's, that's on our mind. I, I was, I thought you were talking about this, the school choice will be a blind admission.
No, just current, you know, numbers look one way.
That would be a factor in what I recommend.
Feel another way, you know, that kind of thing.
That will be a factor in what I recommend.
And do we have the ability to, and I'm asking, because maybe this has to be in our policy, that they have to reapply each year? So if it's like a three, or if we open it, can we do something like that?
For preschool, yes, yes.
So it's like you are a three and then maybe we have a lot of kids move in all, all of a sudden, and now we can't, you know, take those kids back?
You could say that it's a yearly, yearly review.
Yep, great.
Okay, thank you. So school council did actually a couple of meetings over the course of the last month. And we have completed our proposed Irving Student Handbook, which the members of the council were very excited about. You have, you were both given a copy, I believe, and you also have a link to a copy in my PowerPoint. We are very excited to put this into place. We feel as though many families would prefer to have something concrete to work off of. It was a wonderful series of conversations over the course of time. We also began our conversation and went over a number of data pieces around creating our school council, so our, our school improvement plan with the school council. We have narrowed down what our four goals will be to five categories. And during our next meeting, we will be drafting those goals and then asking the members of the teaching staff to work on a series of action steps in connection to those goals. Are there any questions about the handbook?
Are we, are we going to have that on our next month's agenda to vote on that handbook? Or is it not ready to be voted on? Is it in a place where you're?
It's, it is the, the proposal of the school council that it be voted on at your earliest convenience. It is complete in their minds.
Okay, so then we'll need to add that to our next agenda, because it's, oh, I'm sorry, it is on here, new business. Never mind, I didn't see it at first.
Yes. Looking at school-wide data, so this is a request from last month. And I will do a quick review of the superintendent's report from the fall. And then I'm going to be including our comparison data for ELA from fall to winter. So accountability data for 2024, this was presented in the fall by our superintendent. We were listed with, at substantial progress to our target. If you'll notice on, in 2023, the annual criterion reference target percentage was thirty-two percent. Last spring's numbers went up in a variety of areas, which I will show in next slide. But the end result was that our criterion reference to target percentile moved to seventy-four percentile. So a substantial increase. As we look at the aspects that are again shown in the fall, areas where we saw some big increase was in our English Language Arts points earned. It went from two to four, of possible four. For mathematics, it went from zero to two. Again, very excited about that. Our growth area, we moved from two to three in English Language Arts and one to two in math. And then the big gain was chronic absenteeism went from zero to four. So we really knocked off that chronic absenteeism last year. Very excited about that. Additionally, presented in the fall was our score numbers. Our target, we are listed as exceeding targets for ELA. We were at four eighty-eight point nine, which in 2023, we moved to four ninety-two point seven. Or actually, the state's rounded up to four ninety-three, which they said was exceeding our targeted goal for that. In math, we moved up by about a point, a point, one point seven percent. And then there isn't a way to compare science, we only have the one year of science, because we're only in fifth grade. But again, they were, the state was pretty pleased with the, the rapid growth in ELA and we're looking to kind of continue in that trend. Shannon's slides included in the fall that, you know, we had an achievement in math increased, growth in math increased. Chronic absenteeism went down, or was improved dramatically. Again, and this is the highest we've been at since 2018. Our internal numbers for this year. So we began the year with fifty-two percent of our kids achieving benchmark or beyond, which means that they were on grade level or they were above grade level to start the school year. In January, we had risen to sixty-one percent. So it's a nine percent increase in the course of the fall. Pretty excited about that and we're looking to capitalize on that through the course of the springtime. Number of students in need of close monitoring. We began, oh, see, ended last year with seventy-five students that we had identified as in need of close monitoring.
Your numbers are, sorry, your numbers are different than my numbers.
Oh, sorry about that?
I'm having a tough time following you, because your numbers are different than my numbers. Is that the updated sheet?
This might be, oh.
This one says seventy.
This is an updated sheet. I apologize. I thought the updated sheet went into your packet. I'm not, I did not realize it had not.
Okay.
This is the only sheet that was updated, though. So I, I thought when I got submitted, it was.
So I think that's why Robin gave you so many of these.
So sorry.
I, she goes, oh, no, they're in their packet. I was wondering why I had so many. So this is the updated sheet with a note from Robin that said, updated slide.
There were a few students removed that did not return, and so it didn't make sense to have them included and whatnot, so. So we started with, we ended, ended last year with seventy-five students that were going to be close monitored this year and receive intervention. Beginning of this year, when we did testing, that number was at fifty-eight percent, which means over the course of summertime, we did have some students that made some pretty significant gains. We were very excited to see that. Some of those students received summer school, most though were working with our town library. They do a tremendous program, I'm sure you all know, as members of the library staff or current or previous. So we're pretty excited to see that number drop. The best part, though, is that number has continued to drop. We went from, we went down by twelve additional students. So now we are, are monitoring only forty-six students of the initial seventy-five that we thought last year in the spring we would have to be monitoring.
But last year in spring included sixth graders, did it not?
No.
It did not include sixth graders?
The number did not. These were the number, these were the seventy-five students that we anticipated would be returning this fall.
So they were fifth graders?
So they were, fifth graders were younger.
Okay.
This is, these numbers are just, are kids, that's why the change in the slide you have, because there were students who were listed in here who didn't return in the fall. And so I said we should pull those numbers out.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we weren't aging out, the subscribers age out, so that would skew the, the numbers.
Correct. So there are forty, there were, we started the year with fifty-eight students who were being, receiving monitoring and support. We are now only monitoring and supporting forty-six, so we have twelve students that have graduated out of this through the course of the fall. Our grades K to three students, we use the divvles and the nonsense word fluency growth is probably the best benchmark indicator for reading growth. And at this time, seventy-six percent of our children in grades K to three are receiving, oh, sorry, are on And at this time, seventy-six percent of our children in grades K to three are receiving, oh, sorry, are on or above grade level. Very excited to see that number. Uh certainly the twenty-four percent who are now receiving um tier, tier two are also, many of them are going to be receiving tier three as well because spots were opened up when children moved on to grade level or above. And then our oral reading fluency for grades four to six, which the, we changed the indicator because it's a much more appropriate indicator for our older students. Again, we're at seventy-four percent achieving the recommended growth and we're looking at about twenty-six percent that we're going to continue to target. Do you want me to take questions on this portion of it before we move on? Because the rest of it's a different, it's a different topic.
I have a question, I guess.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh back to the the slide where the benchmark was, we had fifty-two percent or sixty-one percent.
Yep.
Uh am I understanding this is some measure of proficiency in these things? Just do I understand it a little better?
This is a, yes, so thank you. This is a compa- combined of all di- all the different DIBELS tests that are given. There's a number of subtests that are are given in reading across the kindergarten through grade six range. So when you combine all of them together, these are our numbers. So there, we did pull out two indicators that are the closest aligned to reading success to show in pre- in the other slides. But if you cumulatively look at all of the indicators, this is where we are with um from beginning to middle of year.
Dan, if I can, DIBELS is just, it's it's the um benchmarking system that we use to assess around uh English Language Arts.
Okay.
Um so it's it's a series of assessments and they vary based on grade and skill.
Okay.
Um and so fifty-two percent at the beginning of the year of our students were at where they were supposed to be or above.
Okay.
And now at the midpoint in the year, sixty-one percent of our students are at where they're supposed to be for English Language Arts or above. Does that make sense?
It does, and and when you say the the targeted group, these are the people who have not reached this amount of proficiency, the targeted help them get better. Okay, it does, is there a similar kind of thing for math and science? This is, this is language and that kind of stuff?
So there is, and it's one of the things that um, if you were at the JSC last night and I talked to, and in my report about some of the things that we haven't been utilizing in the union is some standardized norm-referenced benchmarks, right? So we get MCAS, when we get MCAS in September, that doesn't help us change our instruction in the middle of the year. And so um having um some tools so that's, like we have DIBELS for ELA, having some tools where we can check how are our students doing in November, where we can still make changes to instruction before the MCAS. And that's one of those things that's been lacking um and in my report last night, I'm not sure if you were on the line because there were a lot of people there, it was like the Brady Bunch. But, you know, when we talk about um having some oversight inefficiency, we have had schools in the union that were paying for a benchmark assessment. They didn't even know they had. Um and so having a standard eyes going into next year, and that's one of the things on Friday when there's um teachers are going to be out, they're going to start getting the training, um you know, an introduction to the benchmarking assessments that they will be using for both ELA and math starting in September.
Thank you.
So kind of a long-winded answer, but I hope that gave you some clarity.
It it does, it does for me and for parents who are wondering, you know, either pay attention to my kid and my kid's needs.
Sure.
And it also explains it to taxpayers who are saying, you know, what am I getting for my money? Uh yes, we're educating your kids and we're looking at each individual student to see what do they need and how can we better get it for them? Uh and I appreciate that very much and I suspect the thousands of people watching will also.
There is a math screener, though, that they're using, right?
So there is a math screener, yes, but it's not a comparative screener. What it does is the math screener moves from fall to winter to spring. And so to be able to get comparison data like this really is just not possible because it's a different set of standards each time they take it at a different level of academic challenge. So we really only know what happens with with that one. We can't really compare one to the other.
So is the goal then to maybe change that and use one of the ones that you're talking about or in addition to?
You can get valuable information from that because it tells you about the things I'm just teaching now.
Okay.
Are, you know, where do they stand? But yes, this will give us um a a lot more um information to to help us guide if we need to make any changes to instruction um and progress monitoring.
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, so I think that, let me just say, I think it's great that there is progress being made, right? Fifty-eight to forty-six, that's certainly progress. Um but I do want to just note that fifty-eight kids, right, this is number of students, so it's fifty-eight students, is fifty-eight percent of our school. I mean, we have about a hundred K to six, you know, when you take out preschool. That leaves about a hundred. So fifty-eight of our kids were in the needs close monitoring. Um that's.
To start the year.
That is a significant number if this small of a school.
Yes.
With um, you know, with the resources that we have, and we still have forty-six percent of our school needing close monitoring. So I'm happy to see that there are gains. I I'm, I just feel like, though, in perspective, that's still a big number.
It is.
Right? And so I think we all just need to own that, that that is still a very big number for the school that we have, for the for the materials that we have, for the staffing that we have. It is a big number.
Yes, but it really shouldn't be a huge surprise because it matches the historical MCAS data.
Yeah.
So this is not any, ooh, this year, fifty-three.
No.
And that was one of the things that I talked about, about, you know, we have to have those hard conversations about, we're doing good things. What is the impact on student learning?
Mm-hmm.
Because that, this, you know, for people who have been on this committee, well, it shouldn't be any surprise.
No.
Because it is directly, it matches almost identical to some of your recent MCAS scores. So I think to see the signs of progress is great, um but putting those other things in place like benchmark assessments, like a data cycle where we are regularly looking at data and making changes to instruction and monitoring our students responding to intervention. Do they have, maybe they're not having the right intervention tool.
Yeah.
And I don't, that is no, that is really much more an indicator of a lack of system.
Yes.
Than it is about anything about teacher efficacy or anything like that. It's it's a system, right? It has to start at the top and so I'll own that has to start in my office um with conversations with the leadership team about setting those structures in place.
I think those systems could then uncover potential other things that then would be addressed. But yes, I think you're right. I agree. It starts at the, at that level. Progress monitoring, for anybody who doesn't know, I mean, kids, depending on where they're red or yellow, would be every two weeks to every four weeks, they should be being looked at. So this is a very in-real-time type situation um that that should be happening anyways. I look forward to those math data.
Great. Um so moving on to our community component, uh we were very excited to be selected to participate in this week's, um this this month's judicial outreach um piece by Massachusetts. Uh the Honorable Judge William Hadley from the, uh First Justice of Harlitt District Court visited our third and fourth graders this month um on March sixth. The students got to learn about the role of judiciary in government and society, the progress, uh the process, excuse me, of schooling necessary to become a judge and the role in decision-making and choices and the friends play in our lives. The students were really engaged and asked a ton of questions at the end. They even asked for autographs from the judge. The judge was very excited because he had wanted to be Bobby Orr and he really had never been asked for an autograph before. And so this was a big deal for him. Uh the kids really seemed to love getting to listen to him talk about it. And the context for his conversation was all in the pursuit of happiness component of our constitution. And so the kids got a really good foundation in government. We were thrilled and thankful for his presence. Additionally, this month, we had kindergarten math night. It was a wonderful community event led by Jamie, who happens to be here this evening. Our kindergarten students spent the evening teaching math to their families. It was a lot of fun to watch and participate in, and so I was thankful to see so many people there. And we had our highest number of students participating this year in the MCBA book-themed evening for grades four, five, and six. It was wonderful to be there and be a part of it, and I know that our librarian, Ms. Morris, is very much looking forward to being able to host this next spring. So that's a a good piece for us. And we, I did know you referenced you want to discuss uh before school. I have taken the opportunity to reach out to staff to investigate the potential for adding before-school program. At this time, we only have one staff member who is interested in working that program. Unfortunately, that would not be sufficient to safely run a program. What I do intend to do is send out a parent survey now that I have given the staff an opportunity, just so I could see how many parents would be interested. I will be very clear on the survey, letting them know at this time, we don't have adequate staffing to run a program. But we would like to at least know what percentage of our families would take advantage of the program if it existed so that I could continue to work to recruit more people, um if that potentially was something that we would need to have.
Are you only looking at the pool of current staff members for staffing this program or would you consider going out, outsourcing to community hires?
So at this time, we have only looked internally, but we would, but after doing the survey of parents to find out how many people would would take advantage of such a program, we would then discuss with the superintendent how we could put out to the greater community who else might be interested in working the program.
With a program like this, we've tried it in the past, um and it wasn't well utilized, so then it kind of fizzled out. But I think when we're sending out surveys, keeping in mind what your guidelines and barriers and and time constraints and stuff would be and being very transparent in the survey um is important because those factors are going to determine whether a parent, they might be super interested, but if you're like, oh, it's only eight to eight-thirty, then they're like, oh, that doesn't meet my needs. So I I would just say, like, I'm s- I'm excited to see the survey come out and I'm excited to see what that data brings. Um and if we can just be, uh uh try to be as transparent as like what this program might look like if we were able to do it so that way we can get accurate information as far as need and stuff like that, so then we can kind of look at what what next steps would be.
Absolutely. Um I do also intend, again, to be honest about the fact that at this time, we don't have staffing and we would need to be put out to the community for someone to come in to be a part of, to build a staff. So it's not something that could be put in place quickly. You know, this is a, this is a process to to build a program, so, yes.
I think the discussion that I saw pretty much um ended with, um we'll see what's next year. We'll see where we're at next year, was kind of the, where the the discussion that I heard.
Okay.
And I don't know that there were more than two people at the most that I have heard any interested and maybe not even more than just one. I don't know what you've heard.
And so it may be something that's not, I mean, would be wonderful, but not sustainable for us to run for for two or three students. But we'll get the information from the parent survey and that will sort of dictate our next steps.
And I don't know if this is a good time to add them together or if we keep them separate, but I know when we had brought after-school kind of back after COVID and stuff, Wednesdays haven't been included because staff are running it and they're in PD. And so that has come up here and there of, you know, maybe if we run before-school and have outside people that are willing to staff it, would those same people be willing to staff on a Wednesday? And so I don't know if at this point it, for, because we're doing a survey, we add Wednesdays on that as an option to see what that, you know, need would look like, um just so we don't have to do multiple surveys. Or if it's something we don't want to touch, that's fine, too, but just wanted to throw that out there.
No, thank you. So and then, to be fair, there was one surprise slide, only because I'm super excited about it. Uh you may not have noticed when you arrived tonight, however, the extra storage container is gone. By combining, by getting rid of all the things we did not own as a district that had been left behind by people who had retired and throwing out all the things that were broken, which I didn't understand why we were storing. We were able to then move the remaining small number of items into one of the other storage containers we owned. And then I called Brian and surprised him by letting him know we were good to go. Last Thursday, they came and picked it up, which means that we will not be charged tomorrow, which would have been the charge date for the next month.
Awesome.
So it is gone. If you take a moment and drive by at any point, you'll notice it's no, it's no longer there. I um will begin to work on putting together the surplus paperwork. It's going to require us to actually pull everything out of the two remaining containers, do counts on them, look at each of the items and determine which ones we're planning on keeping, which ones we think could be, you know, remanded to or, you know, sold by the town to other communities if that was something they wanted to do. And the town would have that option. We'll put that paperwork together and get that to Brian um as early as we can. But it is nice to be able to say that we are no longer going to be receiving that monthly charge.
Thank you very much for your efforts.
Um and that concludes my presentation for this month.
Thank you. Perfect, thank you.
All right. Report from the Teachers, Irving Teachers Association?
We did have that in our packet, um and I, I don't, I have it up. I can just read quick updates. I, I know we usually say if it's attached and they're not here, we're not going to talk on it, but I think this is one of my favorite parts, so I'll share. Um, so pre uh pre-K to two, so uh those updates is, uh we just heard a little bit about it, but kindergarten had um has been a fun and exciting place this month and they've been learning about measuring, maple sugaring, S and T, S H and T H digraphs and preparing to become teachers for their math night. They had spent time creating structures using many different types of builders, went on a walking field trip to the Irving Library and had another silly story with Principal Gannon. Um and kindergarten math night was a huge success with about seventy percent of the students attending with their families. And they got wonderful feedback from their exit surveys and they're looking forward to continuing that tradition in the future. So that's really exciting. So nice job kindergarten. Uh fifth and sixth grade went on a walking field trip to the Irving Public Library last week and they had a great visit. The students are very excited about the teen room and maker space. And several students walked over in the afternoon to participate in the teen craft designing pennants. And then the STARS program acronym stands for Students Together Achieving Remarkable Success. And this program started on January sixth. They did attach some wonderful pictures of the classroom, which were really fun to see. And the youth service library from the Irving, librarian from the Irving Public Library came to the STARS room on February twenty-seventh and read a story before sharing a variety of books about Legos. And she'll either be coming back again in April or there are, they are going to travel to the Irving Public Library next time. The STARS program received a grant um that we heard about, I think, last month for a hundred and forty-four dollars from the Greenfield Garden Club. And they have purchased a seventeen-pod hydroponic system for growing herbs and vegetables. So the students have been learning about gardening and they will be planting and recording the growth of the student-selected plants over each week. And they also included um some of those pictures that were um of what they got through the grant and and yeah, that was it. So thanks for sharing that. I always appreciate what's kind of, hearing the updates of what's going on within the school. So that is from them.
I, this is sort of uh into the um the uh last, let's see, Tuesday, yes, last night's meeting. At the time that we were supposed to have updates from the school, from the elementary schools. schools, my computer, um, did some high-changes, and there was absolutely no sound whatsoever for about, until I heard the final, "Well, thank you very much." So I don't know, did any of this get reported to them during that time? Did we have an Irving report?
No. I was there with my camera off, 'cause I was dealing with Beth and everything else, um, and I thought, I was waiting for you, 'cause you were so active with the meeting, so I was like, oh, Mark's got this.
Yeah, last month, or last time we had, had a meeting, I had, you know, talked to you and collected some information and made a report, 'cause we, in the past, we've been lacking one. This is what we need, and as I say, I didn't see this, and even if I had, I wouldn't have been, I couldn't talk, I couldn't hear, I mean, I, I, for a little while, I used closed captioning, but I couldn't keep up with that. It was, and then I restarted my whole computer, and boom, everything worked. And, but it was, "Thank you very much. Is there anybody who wants to adjourn, call for adjournment meeting?" But as I say, this, if, you can make sure we have this available before the next supervisory meeting, so we can get this in.
I was there last night, and there was some confusion on my part, because there was another woman named Beth, who's actually a voting member of the committee, and so I think, I don't know if I was being called on, she thought she was being called on to present for, um, her town, and so I didn't say anything, I just kind of listened.
Usually, it's a school committee member that speaks.
Right, I figured, but then when I saw you drop off, I was like, ooh, am I supposed to speak? And then he said Beth, and I'm like, I am supposed to speak, but then the other Beth said something, and I'm like, nope, I am not speaking.
So anyway, this would be very nice, this would be a very, very good report.
I would say either that or, or Beth's report, because she also highlights things that are going on in the school, so I think either, either one would be useful.
Yeah, we need to make sure there is a report.
Yes.
That has been lacking in the past. And there are good things going on here.
Yes.
Okay, we all set with that? Um, Pi Report.
So we met on March third. Um, we're in the process of planning a fun family spring event and a spring fundraiser along with Staff Appreciation Week, so that's kind of was start of the conversation. Um, we had some questions to ask and people to get, um, information from, to come back to our next meeting to be able to make a better decision on those, so if you have any ideas or want to be part of that, feel free to join. The apparel store is still open, um, and as I think I've previously mentioned, now you can get Irving Elementary School apparel in many different colors, um, and there's some, a lot of nice, fun, spring colors in there. And the next meeting is Monday, April seventh, at seven PM on Google meets. For anyone that might have had the old link saved, we updated the link for last month. Uh, we had people outside of the school try to join in forces on our previous meeting, um, that were just, yeah, like, not hacking, but just trying to come on, so we blocked all of them, but it was a process throughout the whole meeting of like, don't let this person in, maybe we'll let this person in. So we just created a whole new link, um, and I know that caused some confusion, so we apologize for that. So, um, we will make sure that it gets on ClassDojo and is in the newsletter, um, again, so people can save it if they want. We tend to try to use the same link unless there's an issue, so, there is a new link now. Um, so yeah, April seventh, at seven, on Google meets.
Okay. Um, Budget and Personnel Committee Report. Did you have a report from Budget and Personnel? I don't think we've met, right? No. Um, Joint Supervisory Met last night. Any one of, you two want to duke it out as to who wants to give a quick update? Or Shannon? Don't all speak.
I didn't get there until after Shannon's report, and it was a little later, so I...
Mark, anything of, no?
There were just a re, there was a review of, um, items on that, from that efficiencies report, and, um, I, I didn't think it was a very thorough review, because there were, when the committee met, um, there were things that we already are doing, and that was not mentioned, and there were, yeah, it was somewhat incomplete of a report of that committee. And then, as I say, we were in the midst of one place when suddenly, technology failed me. But if you want to say anymore of anything, and it was, and your report was in, and your evaluation, or self-evaluation was out, and I think we're gonna do, we're coming out with a format for your evaluation in June, and it'll be, um, put together in November? Or September?
I think in the September meeting, though.
Yeah, it'll be going over in the fall. And I don't know what else to say.
Thank you, Dave. I covered it.
Okay. Any questions about that?
Well, I, there is more in that efficiency report that needs some action, but I don't know when or where that would happen. I don't know.
Do you have clarity on that, Shannon, at all?
So it's an advisory committee, and so, um, to Mark's point, I do feel glad that I was at the meetings, because I have a better understanding than if I had just sat in the JSC meeting, um, and Caitlin was in there. Um, there are some things, there were some things that they pointed out that just aren't right. I mean, if they're, you're looking just from a dollars and cents, regionalization is, would be their recommendation, we're not gonna spend time looking at that, but that's their job, right? We know that that would be cost-effective. Um, but there were some things in there that we could, um, leverage our resources a little bit better. Um, what we found is that, and, and it's, I gave an example at the meeting, it's some of the little things that make us inefficient that you wouldn't think are big things. So for example, we can't purchase curriculum, any of those things, they want to bill us as four different districts, because that's what we are, but we really are the size of a small, one small district. And we've had hang-ups about, well, we can't bill you that way, because you don't have one email. And so it's things like that that seem like, well, that shouldn't be a big thing to fix, but then, well, this municipality controls this email, this municipality controls that. It becomes a much bigger issue that becomes a barrier to saving some money. Um, so it's really looking at what are the things we can tackle. Um, we replicate, I, I will say, one of the things that they identified, and it's one of the things I identified as, um, an area that rural schools typically are, are highly, um, impacted by, technology. We have the same technology being repeated in four different places, and that's probably not the most efficient model. So it's really looking at what are the priorities identified by that advisory group, and what can we really do about it within the structure that we have? And some things can be done, um, and we've done some of them already, um, and not even on my watch, that one of the things was get your own procurement officer, well, Caitlin is a procurement officer now, when they did that study, she wasn't. So there are some things in play. Um, my plan is, you know, we'll, we'll tackle that as a leadership team and, and look at, you know, some recommendations. I always think more, more heads are better than one. Um, and then I'll probably give an update in the fall about, these are the priority areas that we're gonna try to tackle, and here's our plan for it.
It seemed to me that, given the variety of different things, and the level of priority that people put, that it, it's kind of like, well, you're gonna take, one thing's gonna be done, then another thing's gonna be done, and, oh, six months later, another step will be taken. Uh, and it's a good blueprint to, to move forward and, and get some economies in place, and maybe we'll figure out somewhere down the road how to have a single email.
It, it's not even just, I mean, there's certainly a financial implication, but it's also a human capital piece, right? Like, we have a, a limited number of, of people, and how can we best use them so they're not replicating tasks? And I think we've done some of those things. I mean, the frontline management system, and we are a very small overall number of employees, but when you think about, and I didn't have an appreciation for this until I spent some time in the office, but, you know, we have four different contracts, so, you know, the room for human error is just unavoidable, because you're dealing with three people who are dealing with, you know, four different contracts and four different rates of pay, and by getting some of those things automated, not only are we using our human capital more efficiently, we're going to reduce some of those errors that can be frustrating, right? They're frustrating for the business office when they're called on it, they're frustrating for the people impacted, but it's kind of, it's just the volume that happens even in the small union because of all the different consists.
I guess there's more to, to say about it than we thought there was.
Yeah, it really, it's like a rabbit hole, like, I don't know if I want to go any deeper.
One of the, one of the things to say was, the report, the original report was focused on essentially not educational things, but on support services primarily, um, cafeteria, maintenance, um, you know, the central office things, ordering supplies and things, and, um, and in some ways, many of our, they pointed out that many of our particular schools are, you know, staffed at a level where, you know, there's an awful lot of strain on people to do an awful lot in, say, in maintenance or, or in the cafeteria, and they, that people put out the extra effort because they're dedicated to the town, and they see themselves in terms of towns, and, um, and how do you leverage that enthusiasm and find a way to cover for people who get sick and maintain, you know, that it, that, there's a lot of little pieces that, you know, we can work on over time.
I recall years ago that, and I think it was for a grant, but, but I wonder if it could be expanded to potentially cover some of these issues, that, I think it was New Salem Went, Went, Wendell?
Yes, yeah, that's Luther.
Yeah, um, they became like the head for the purposes of needing one name on the contract, one contact person, and then it was dispersed out, and again, I think this was in terms of a grant, but I wonder if that couldn't be something for the purposes of a buying power of, you know, chairs, or, you know, something that, that becomes that sort of situation. Um, the other thing is, I know that that was also one of the reasons that we first became involved with the collaborative, was because that was something that they had kind of, um, sold to us as, like, we will help you become a bigger buying power, because we have all these towns now that we can use as the buying, um, you know, hub, instead of each individual little town doing things.
So I do think that that's helpful for bid supplies, but when we look at, like, curriculum, and, you know, you get a cheaper rate the more that you have, and some have been very willing to work, and, and that's, you know, that was just one example of you think, well, this is an easy fix, and then you're like, oh.
Yeah.
It's not really an easy fix.
I will just say, oh, uh, just a word of caution on that, too, is I think we need to be very careful about, yes, it may be more economical if we all bought the same thing, but to ensure that that thing is really what Irving wants, and it's not, we're doing it because that just makes us a bigger buying power. I mean, we've maintained our districtship, not becoming a regional district, a, a regional school district, for a reason, in that we want to have that, um, that ability to make the choices that we feel are best for Irving, and I think the other towns feel similar, and so just, you know, keep that in kind of the back of your head when, when decisions are being made, um, that we do feel very strongly that we like to be our own.
Oh, I'm very clear about the autonomy.
We are our own town, and we like to be that way.
And I'll be honest, I, I mentioned it several times in the report, Irving is not alone in that, right?
Yeah, that's the thing, we're not.
And, and I do think, and, and we've seen what happened when small schools, you know, we saw what happened in Warwick when they, and I think people are very sensitive to that, so I'm, I'm well aware of the autonomy that's needed.
So it's that balancing act of wanting to be efficient, but also keeping Irving being Irving, and New Salem being New Salem, and, you know, lever being levered.
Let me add to that, that, man, this is my own view, and I looked at the initial report, nearly every case, while they were gaining efficiencies, they were requiring additional administrative staff.
Right.
And if you had implemented everything in there, in that report, the central office staff, which, what do you got now in the central office staff? Five?
Three.
Would have been ten to twelve people.
Yeah. I remember that, I remember when that report came out, and, and...
And, you know, and the question would be, could we have afforded it?
How is that saving, you know, are we saving any money at that point?
Yeah, my opinion was, I'm not too sure the savings would have been there.
Right.
But...
Agreed.
Um, just to piggyback, Mackenzie, you had mentioned the grant that was kind of consolidated. I think you're talking about S R two, for the S R two grant, they applied for it just through New Salem Wendell, we acted as our fiscal agent.
This was actually long before that, it was, uh, this was years and years and years ago, but, maybe for that, too.
And then, this is before me, but I think that was found to be even more cumbersome than having everyone in charge of their own S R, and we kind of, I, as I came in, I dealt with the kind of ramifications of having one person be, you know, one school being in charge of the S R two, and so for S R three, they divided it up for districts. So every time you think you're gonna, like, make it a little more efficient, then it's like, open up a can of another problem.
Yeah. Yep.
Moving right along, yeah.
Um, okay, so, and the Joint Supervisors meeting again on May nineteenth?
And that will be their last meeting until September.
May nineteenth at seven PM, virtually. Possibly a person, do we know?
Yeah, well...
Currently, right now, it, they're, they have something to extend it, but it has not been approved. So as of right now, all online meetings end at the end of this month. I suspect that will be changed, but it has not changed yet.
I suspect as well.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
So what I heard was that, I'm, I'm asking is, that, is there a bill that's set to make it extend until...
They, they have presented to the House, I think, to extend, it's the same, they're just gonna extend the deadline. I want to say I heard they're extending it three years, but I'm not, I'm not sure.
That's sort of what I had heard.
But it has not been officially approved, so as of right now, at this moment, it's as far, to the best of my knowledge, it ends.
But hopefully before May nineteenth, it will be extended.
Well, it'll have to be extended by the thirty-first of May, because that's when it expires, of March, because that's when it expires.
All right, so we're on to old business. We've got the therapy dog discussion and possible vote, and surplus equipment update. Um, is there more of an update on the surplus? Okay, so we're still not ready with the list yet?
No.
Okay.
That's gonna take a little longer. I'm gonna need a day, I'm gonna need a couple of days where I can actually take the custodians out of the building, remove everything from them, go item by item and look to see what's in the best condition, put the one, the items that are in the best condition into one, um, you know, put everything else into the other, and then enlist item by item what those items are, and so that's, looking like that will be a little longer to do.
Well, it sounds like you made a lot of progress that hasn't been made in a long time, so I appreciate it.
Yeah. Um, are you thinking possibly that could be done over April vacation?
Um, unfortunately, I'm not gonna be able to be available during April vacation. I have a, a family matter that I'm gonna need to deal with.
Okay.
Normally, that would have been my opportunity to do it, yes, had this not come up.
I mean, if this is all, I, I, I'd like to offer my, my time to do it, since I do have time in my life.
I would be phenomenally excited for anyone who wants to help with this, let me be very clear about that.
Yeah, well, call on me, you know, call me if you really need the hands to do it.
I mean, I honestly, I'll come over on a, if there's a bunch of people who want to come over on a Saturday and help me unload and look at stuff, I'll do it on a Saturday. I'm, I'm good with that. I just, I unfortunately have some family issues that I need to support.
Sure, that's fine, I mean, you don't have to go into detail, that's fine, you're not available.
Maybe we should do it around anything-go sticks. Never mind, let's move on.
Well, no, they got rid of everything that was, you know, junk, so...
That's why we're down to, we're down one storage unit, so...
Yes, yes, very good.
Um, okay, so, so not seeing much more to add to that, uh, agenda point, we'll go back to the therapy dogs. So, um, there's been some discussion at the policy level?
Very brief, because we just, we met just before this. Um, so, I have, I reached out, as I said I would in the last meeting, I reached out to very superintendent, to the superintendent group. There are, I was overwhelmed by the number of people who, number of schools that do have, um, comfort dogs. I was specific that this is not a service dog, because it's a different, um, designation. Um, this policy was used by several, they referenced, oh, I get this from this, I get, you know, we used it. I spoke with Adam and he said, once the committee, so I said, I think we have a rough policy we'd like you to look at. And he said, if you agree, you vote to move forward, then he will work with me on, you know, this is kind of a frame of what the policy will look like. He will look at it with his legal eagle eye and make any changes, though these have been vetted through other school attorneys, not, not necessarily Adam. But we have to make a decision. I, I don't want to type Adam's time to look at a policy we're not, if we're not going to move in that direction.
Yeah, that makes sense. So are we looking at this point to be making adjustments to this policy? Or are we looking, just flesh out the order of things? Or are you looking to have Adam take a first look at it and then us to tweak and then bring it back to Adam?
So I, my thought is that you would take a look at this and see if there's some area that's not in here that you want addressed. I, I had written notes, I think I have all of the things we talked about as far as making, you know, what are the list of all the things we want the person to, the handler to be responsible for. I did share this with Brian, who shared it with our insurance carrier to get recommendations about what will be the insurance amount that's required. So I think at this point, I am looking for you to decide if you want to move forward with this or not. And it's not something that would start tomorrow, but that would give me, you know, the go ahead to meet with council about, here's our plan, are we missing anything? And, and then move forward. I think you adopt a policy and then the person who, who wants to make a request to follow the policy would start that process, if that makes sense.
So what you're saying is, at this point, we don't know anything, but at the next policy meeting, we'll have a policy that will have been reviewed by council.
Right, if, if you as a committee want to go forward in, in establishing a policy. I think the thing to remember is you can have a policy and it doesn't mean that it's necessarily enacted because it would have to be approved by the principal and superintendent.
And it might also be a policy that gets put into place and she decides not to do it. And two years down the road, somebody else comes forward.
Right.
The decision comes up again, but there'll be a policy in place.
Yeah.
For the purpose of tonight, so that we can have this reviewed by our attorney, I would move that we vote as a committee that we move forward to that point. Because we need that so we can continue to look at it. From all that I've heard, I've heard no negatives at all from anybody. I've heard positive for kids, no impact for the taxpayers, no liability, the insurance will cover it. So I would move that we, that we vote to move forward and have the attorney review it. That's not acceptance of a final policy, but just that we support moving forward.
Okay, so you're making a motion? Okay, so we have a motion, do we have a second? So I'll second it for the purposes of discussion and then.
Thank you.
You know, move to vote.
I just don't think we need to do anything because the, the attorney is now going to be looking at it as it stands. That was the last step that you were going to take. And it was going to come to the policy committee. I mean, I don't mind taking the vote.
No, no, we have to take the vote to move it forward so that Adam looks at it. He's got to know that we all want to move.
I don't want to tie Adam's time with reviewing a policy for us if this committee is not interested in, in, in bringing that program. It just feels to me like we're allocating our legal resources to something we're not interested in.
Okay.
Yeah, and so, right, that's the, the reason with which you made your motion, yeah.
There were, I'm, I can't find notes right now, but we had just gotten it. And I apologize, I had to leave during policy. Couldn't have a further discussion. But I know somewhere I have like questions, comments, like all that fun stuff. I would love to at least be able to share that before it's shared with Adam because I think some of the thoughts I was having might be questions that we have to ask Adam. So it, it's like a one deal thing, not a, you know.
He may change a lot of this anyway.
Right, but just like in addition to. So I don't know how that impacts or changes what we have going on, but I just want to make sure that all committee members have that opportunity as well, knowing that we had just gotten it recently. So that way we can share and maybe get feedback from Adam while he's also reviewing and kind of just keep that conversation going.
I think.
Yeah, my motion is, would not prohibit any of that. It would encourage more discussion with that.
And, and it would have to go into the policy committee as well. So, you know, what he comes up with is going to come back with. So all of us are, you know, it behooves all of us to spend some time reviewing what you had put out already and be ready to ask questions again when the policy comes. Policies have to go through a couple of readings, a vote to this committee and a reading in this committee before they can put it, be put into place. So we have ample time to modify and adjust it and ask questions.
I think as, as superintendent and Beth, I'm going to speak for you, but you can tell me if you're not speaking correctly. I would just like some guidance, is this something, right, there's a lot of steps that still have to be in play, but is this something that this committee is in support of creating a policy to, to have emotional support dogs? Because I'll be honest, it's a lot, right, we're going to now type Adam's time. It's, it's, you know, time on my end. And if it's something that you're not, that your reservations outweigh the benefit, that makes sense? And you're not interested, I don't want to waste Adam's time for mine.
Right, I think that's why a motion was made and a second. So now we're discussing that and I think that vote will be kind of the, the.
Right, and it doesn't mean that it happens right away, but that we're, I have your blessing to explore it.
Right, right, right. And I also just want to say that as, certainly we want to be mindful about efficiencies and so make as much changes as we want potentially to give it to the attorney. We can always send it back. So if the attorney sends it back to us, we say, eh, we still want to tweak this out and the other, we send it back to him again. I mean, that's just, that's what we pay him for. So, you know, I don't want us to feel like we can only send it to him once and then that's it, we got to live with it. No, we want to be efficient and we want to not waste everybody's time, but we don't also want to just put something in place just because he's taken one look at it. So I want that to be clear as, as far as the process goes.
I just want to throw out too, that I want to see a policy in place that covers not just the current situation, which we have stated some particulars about how it will work, but other situations that might come in, such as the ones that you had mentioned, which other schools had in place, where they had different arrangements for using a therapy dog.
So I think, I, I think that's our first step. There's a motion and a second. We've had a pretty good discussion, unless anybody wants to add anything new to that discussion, you know, that might sway the vote one way or the other, that, that's where we're at right now, is taking a vote as to whether we kind of want to take the next step of having all parties involved, creating a policy. So is there, I don't want to cut anybody off, but if there's nothing more new in that realm, we'll go ahead and take the vote. Sound good?
Good.
Feel differently? Okay, so, all in favor of moving forward with creating a policy for this purpose? Dan, did I, you agree with that?
Just, just to let the attorney look at it, sure.
Okay. Let the attorney look at it, we're going to look at it, policy's going to look at it.
Yeah, a lot of looking to be done, but.
A lot of looking. All right, so, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, was there any no's? Everybody voted, correct? Okay, all right.
Can I just ask a point of clarification? Do you want to, I mean, would it be reasonable if you have things that you want added to get that to me by like the end of the week so I can send it to Adam, though he's gone next week? So it'll probably be two weeks out. Just so I know, this isn't in this current policy, but they are wondering about language around this. Does that make sense?
Do you want me to tell you right now or would you rather me put it in writing?
I'd rather put it in writing.
Okay.
And I can put it all on together.
I have it somewhere, so I can, and it might not even be on this computer.
And again, that doesn't mean we can't continue to tweak and, and give back to him. All right, so on to new business, a request for the town census report. This is simply just, a request was made by Shannon on behalf of Shannon and Gillian to just get the census from the town. The town needs to know that we are supportive of that information being given out. So that's it in a nutshell, the purpose of this vote. So somebody may make a motion and a second for that?
I'm still moved.
All second.
Okay. Any other discussion about that? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Thank you.
Oh, April, we need to adjust the date because of April vacation. So. Everybody wants to pull their calendar out. So we would normally be meeting on the, one, two, three, 15th, but that is, no, one, two. April meeting day, discussion and vote.
That's, this is a different calendar.
I.
I actually don't think we have a conflict.
No, I don't either.
Nope.
Not sure why that's on here. So we are meeting on the 15th, which is not a conflict because the school vacation is not until the following week. So I think that was just an oversight to be, that it was added.
We're meeting on.
Our regular date, yeah.
Our normal date.
April 15th.
Yep.
Come on, oof, there it is, okay.
Right, because vacation is the 21st to the 25th, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so.
I think it's one of, it's typically the third week, but Tuesday, I mean, the first is on a Tuesday, so it kind of skews it a little bit.
All right, so we really actually do not need to take a vote or have a discussion on that. It will continue to be the third week in April like it has always been scheduled. Next is the academic calendar. Again, this is something where we take a look at it, see if there's any glaring issues that we have with it. I'm assuming it's been given to the staff for their thoughts.
It has, it has been given to the staff. We've, if you'll see, it says version three. We, we took some input and we are trying to align because of, of trying to align across the union some of the conference dates because it impacts our professional development. And so this has been looked at and this is the, I mean, I won't say every person is, is thrilled with it because you'll never get a hundred percent, but this is the consensus.
The only comment I have is on Mar- in March, the conference dates are actually, I think, a little messed up. So I'm just curious what the dates are.
Agreed. What do you mean they're messed up?
On my version, it says the 18th, 19th and 25th.
Yep, so that's correct. So it'll be the 18th and 19th and then there'll be another conference spot on the 25th on the Wednesday.
Oh, so that's unusual. I don't think we've ever had that where it's been split into two different weeks.
So it would be a Wednesday, a Thursday off, and then the following Wednesday?
Wednesday and Thursday would be early release.
Early, no, the 25th would be, let me see, I make sure I have it, yes, 1/15. But the 25th is, is not a change because it's a Wednesday, so typically it's.
Right, and the 18th wouldn't be a change either.
Right.
But then those two, now we're impacting two professional development days where in the past it's only been one professional development day impacted.
Like the PD afternoon on Wednesday?
Yes, because we're trying to align, because what happens is if other, if, the PD gets, gets changed anyway because we can't share, we can't do PD if other schools are having it. So this aligned with get, and Irving is the only school that has three dates. So we're trying to align them. So that, that is our recommendation. We're still going to get all the PD and that we're, we're looking to get during the, the calendar year.
Interesting.
So when you say align, you're talking about aligning with other schools?
Right, because we try to, what happened this year is because the conferences were not aligned at all across the schools, it impacted our professional development scheduling. Because this school had these days, this school had these days, and, and that was an area that wasn't easy fit.
The Wednesday professional development, not your union Friday professional development.
Correct.
So is this something we have to vote?
Yep. It is.
So I make a motion, we accept it, so we can discuss it, which we want to be doing.
I'll second the motion.
The other, the other thing that I think is worth having a discussion about and I, I, you know, I don't know that we can have that discussion today about it, but fundamentally, if our preschool numbers stay so low, they, they start significantly after. And it used to be because they did home visits and then they did screenings. We had two classes or split classes, so there was a lot of kids that were involved in this. We're talking about years where we're having nine, 10, 11 kids. We don't do home visits anymore. That's a lot of days different for them to be starting.
We still do home visits.
What?
We still do home visits.
You do home visits again? For a while they weren't, you weren't doing home visits.
They've been doing them.
Even, even with home visits, I mean, at 10, that's still.
It's five hours without travel.
What?
Half hour home visit, that's five hours without travel, so.
Yep, right, but it's one, two. Four days, four, four to five days after the rest of the school. So sure, home visits are a day, screenings maybe another day.
Home visits are usually more than a day because you give families the options. You don't just say, is this then? I know with kindergarten, I can't speak on preschool, but I do home visits or I offer a school visit. We also have a kindergarten orientation, which is a day where kids come in. They get to see the classroom, the bus ride. And then we also have to set up the classroom, which you know is a little bit different than, you know, an upper grade classroom.
Sure.
Areas.
Yep.
So, and then one of those days is usually taken up by, like, you know, maybe the kids.
Beginning of your meetings for what?
The call staff.
Usually for a state school, but.
No, I'm not even talking about that, that's past that point. You guys arrived back on the 27th, that's when those things happen, the 27th and, if you're talking about just staff stuff, or sorry, the 25th, 25th.
How many extra days does kindergarten get over above other, other classes?
Preschool gets five and kindergarten gets four.
Is it preschool gets five, like, or is it?
It's kindergarten's like a two and a half.
Yeah.
How, how do you figure two and a half?
Because they start on Tuesday.
I've had it super close this year.
So it's really only two, one, two?
Because that Wednesday's a half day.
Right.
So that's. Oh.
Like, we might have mornings, but like.
Yeah, you're right, you're right, kindergarten starts on the second, yep.
So two and a half and then like four.
Well, the first day of school is a half day, so two and a half, yeah.
The four-year-olds come on Wednesday.
Oh, yeah.
And then the three-year-olds come.
Yep.
So it's not.
Don't start until the fourth, which is that Thursday. And again, right now we're talking about like three of them, so it's, you know, it's not like it's a lot.
But they'll still, they'll still have to do the home visits and we're, I mean, we're, I'm hoping that we're going to have the discussion about having a bigger group and we have to have a calendar that supports that.
So years ago, there used to be two classrooms of like 15, 18 kids and it was all done in the same time span. So that's all I'm saying, perspective wise, like there, there's a lot of time to be using. And yes, I definitely want to upgrade, up the, the total number of kids. It's just, I know that that is something that's difficult for parents to have that such a long different, change between when the first kid goes to school and the second kid goes to school sometimes. It's always been something that parents struggle with is how to, to get those days cover for coverage.
We also always have a mindset of the students first and it was always thought of that the older kids come in, get acclimated. Then the younger kids come in like a day or two after them, so that it's like kind of a more settled beginning to school, especially for.
And why are you here to answer all these?
So again, I don't think at this point we're going to make that change. I'm just saying if we, if we continue to move forward with.
Yep.
the numbers that we have, um, it's something to look at. So, other than that, I don't really see a big diff- big, any issues.
I would just be interested to see feedback after next year on what that is, looks like for teachers and families with making the conferences over a two-week span, and if families are trying to book them all that first week, you know, because they have multiple children or stuff going on, and then no one really utilizes the second week, like, yeah, yeah, no, I'm just saying, like, let's look at that and see, you know, what the feedback is, you know, does everyone sign up for the twenty fifth, does everyone sign up for the two before and the twenty fifth wasn't needed, or what that looks like, because I think that's a very int- I can see that, like, being forgotten about or trying to push them all together with your kids on the same days or something like that, so that would be interesting to see. But I did compare it to that, this current year's calendar, and it's very similar.
And, and, so, just go to November for a second. So, the conferences are on a Wednesday and then a Friday? Not Thursday? Nothing happens on that Thursday, the thirteenth? And then we jump back again on the following Wednesday? I understand the Wednesdays, I guess, but why not Wednesday and Thursday? Like, like November has?
I will double check if it's not a typo.
Okay.
But I don't believe that it is.
That, it just seems odd that they would have then a full day and then another half day. And it's, again, it's different than March.
Right, and I think just messing with the schedule.
That's confusing.
It's confusing.
Yeah, if you could look into why it turned out that way, because if it's aligning of the schools again.
But it's not aligning of the schools, it's making sure that we can use the professional development.
Right.
Because that is something that you share, and so we have to be.
Align the professional development, right?
Saying, if you would let us know what happened, what's it, why it turned out that way.
Double check, I don't think.
I just think it's interesting that if we're aligning the professional development, that we're taking, we're actually taking away two Wednesdays, which maybe those are one Wednesday is for one school and ones for another, but if we kept it like Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, or Thursday, two, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, so, something along those nature, we wouldn't have to use two Wednesdays, maybe even if it's not available for PD for Irving, maybe the teachers want that afternoon to do something, you know, different. I, I guess just scattering it just seems very.
Well, if we, let's wait and find out what, you know, why it, why it was done that way.
Right, well, she's, if she's saying it has to do with Wednesday PD and making that available, if we did it on a Tuesday or Thursday, that's not impacting Wednesday, and maybe it, it's a Wednesday that no other school is available, like, then Irving can do something else during that afternoon. It doesn't mean they have to be doing parent teacher conferences, I'm sure there's plenty of other stuff that can be done.
I'll also say that's a tough week because you have the, the eleventh off.
Yeah.
And then a half day Wednesday, which you would normally have, and then a half day.
On a Friday.
Friday, which you don't normally have, that's a really broken up week.
So, I will tell you that that was actually feedback from Irving teachers, that they would rather have one really screwed up week and have all of that continuous weeks of instruction beforehand in September and October as they're setting, and you can speak to that also, Beth, as their students are coming into the building and we're trying to get them acclimated, and rather than have a series of broken up weeks, they would rather have, and that was specific from Irving teachers, that was their feedback.
They, when I met with them, they were very quick to identify that, of the options, anything that would allow for multiple continuous weeks, and in this case, so many September, October, just in a row. No interruptions would really maximize both relationship building and academic work getting underway quickly and be more effective. And so, when the option was presented that there was a, this middle option, they actually were very clear that the, um, they would prefer to have all of the, the special things happen in one week and have all of the learning time be uninterrupted for all of those other weeks. So, we just capitalize on learning time.
Makes sense.
Okay, well, I don't know that we can vote on this if we don't have the answer to that week in November. Because we would be voting on something that potentially.
I think that that is the week, that that is the proposed calendar. I'm just double checking.
Why the, why the, why the full Thursday in between? Beth, do you have any thoughts on that?
I'm sorry?
So, on November, you have the Wednesday early release, which you would normally have.
Yes.
And then you have a whole day Thursday and then an early release on Friday. Why are, why not just do Wednesday, Thursday like you are in March?
I do not know why it was chosen that way. I, that was the calendar was proposed and there wasn't, the, the teachers didn't have an objection to that one. There was, there was much more focus on the October dates than.
To me, that's going to be very confusing to families, and then it's different for, like, if you're going to do it that way, then do it that way for both, which doesn't work, because March has the curriculum day, so.
Well, in October already has that day, so it, it's not.
That's what day?
I'm not looking at October.
No, I know, but I think they were saying like, well, if we take, you know, the time, have the funky schedules be in November, but really, there's still day in October that they're going to have professional development as a union, and then November, like this year, I'm just trying to compare, was, conferences were the nineteenth, twentieth, twenty first, which is that in-between week. So, if we were looking at that for two thousand twenty-five, it would translate into being the eighteenth, nineteenth and twentieth. So, I'm hearing that instead of having like the break on the eleventh, then go into the next week of conferences, then going to a week of off, they wanted to move conferences into the week of the ninth to have those things going on. Is, is that correct?
Are you talking about October or November?
No, November.
Okay, um, I was talking about October initially, because that was the, with the day of the, the, the week of the eleventh where we had off for Vet, for, I'm sorry, Indigenous Peoples' Day, and then we had off on that Friday for the curriculum day, and there was a Wednesday half day, and so we were talking about the fact that that week was very disjointed initially, and then we've moved on to Oc- to November?
No, I, I, we, I don't think we were ever talking about October.
So, then I was confused, I apologize.
We are all, we were always talking about November.
We were always November, yeah, so that's why I was like.
I apologize.
Guess they don't want a funky week, but that is making it more funky.
Okay, so I was on the note, the October week where there was a Monday, uh, holiday, federal holiday. A Wednesday half day and a Friday of curriculum day.
Yeah.
And the staff had been, when we met, I met with the representatives, were very clear that they would prefer to have, you know, all three of those things happen in one week as opposed to moving curriculum day to a different week and being, and ruining multiple weeks.
Right, and that makes sense, and that's been feedback over the years that we finally got it moved, because it used to be the Friday before the long weekend, and that just caused chaos.
Yes, okay, so that definitely got changed.
The, a continuous normal week, starting in October nineteenth, that week are the twentieth really, uh, for school. The October week of the twenty-seventh, then the week of the third in November is a regular week. Then, things get crazy for the tenth. Um, and then, and, but the seventeenth, the week of the seventeenth, um, classroom time isn't disturbed.
Correct. Right, that is correct, and that was again, a priority was to dismi- diminish as many disruptions as possible.
So, this calendar for November actually does give us, or give them, the largest amount of continuous or not, well, yeah, the, the, it bunches up the, uh.
It gives two full weeks, it gives two full weeks of time, the week of the third to the seventh and the week of the seventeenth to the twenty-first.
It is not a typo on the, um, twelfth, fourteenth, because I just checked to see if it was on the other calendars, and so it is not, um.
And then there would be one full week of, all right, kids, you got a, you got a vacation coming up, so knuckle down all the way up to the twenty-fifth, and then they're off.
Yeah, I think, I think what Caitlin and I, just to bring it back, what Caitlin and I are discussing is the, is the week of the twelfth.
Yep, and the fourteenth, I see what you're saying, why is it not the twelfth and thirteenth? To be honest, I don't really, we went with the count, we coordinated with other, so I could ask Robin what that is, but that is not a typo on the calendar presented to you.
Okay.
And then I think what started this conversation too is just figuring out that whole conferences one week and then one day of conferences, the other of getting feedback in November. I just think that that's, it's not necessarily confusing, but can be confusing at the same time, like, yes, it's a Wednesday, they still get dismissed at that same time, so that doesn't really mess with it, but still having to schedule that all and be available and finding out if people are utilizing that second week would be interesting.
The advantage of that too is you're not, you're not just decreasing your time on learning. Because those would be half days and early releases anyways, so, I see the advantage there, I, I think that's kind of screwy to leave a full day Thursday and then a half day Wednesday, that just seems crazy to me, but I, I'm.
That's what they wanted.
Okay, are we, do, do we, I've lost track, have we got a motion in a second?
We do, yeah.
Okay, any further discussion on this?
Just, this, this is, from my understanding, this, this is what the teachers wanted also, is that correct?
Everybody's had a chance to look at it.
It was vetted through the teachers, yes.
Thank you.
All right, all in favor? Okay, moving on. I'd like to hear, um, what the, um, attendance rate is for those days, and then the feedback, if there's any from parents on having that change.
Students on conference days?
Yep, on, well, just the cha- uh, uh, no, no, the students on the change there of like the half days and the, you know, being days that are not normally half days. And a full day randomly in there.
And it would also be interesting.
And staff, for that matter, of attendance for those days. Um, okay, so we're moving on to the handbook. Um, so, I did not realize that the handbook was embedded in the, um, agenda under the principal's report. Um, so, I have skimmed it, there's a couple of things that, I mean, just minor edits that I would make, so, um, do you want to vote on this, or do you want to have a little bit more time to read it?
I would prefer to push it, because I didn't have access to it until tonight, so.
Okay.
You'd like to, um, postpone it to?
Yeah, I would just like to, like, fully review it. I know last time when this was presented, I, there were a lot of different things that were like questions or comments and stuff, and then we never got to that point with it, so I'd like to just make sure we do one full, like.
Read through.
Go through, feel like it's good so that we can feel solid about moving it forward, because I do think that this is important that we get done.
So, that's what we'll do, we'll just, we'll just move it on to the April, um, we'll put it on the April agenda, bring it back.
Does that make a problem for the committee?
It does not, but if you have comments that you would like edited, if I could get those prior to my April seventh meeting, I could bring them back to my school committee, or excuse me, my school council, and allow them to see the recommendations that you're making.
Yep.
And to comment on those recommendations, so.
Um, is it possible to get a printed copy made available here at the school?
I could print a copy now and make available before the meeting ends.
Okay, wonderful, love that, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
That's great.
Okay, um, and so we will add that to our April agenda. Um, out-of-state field trips, discussion and vote.
What were the questions from the last time that we had to settle?
Well, we had some questions about medication, um, according to my notes that that came up, or me, I mean, that was also came up from the nurse, but, um, there was a new policy that was implemented, um, that says student, uh, nurses that come, now let me take this back, students that come to Massachusetts from another state, um, need, they cannot have a medical, um, proxy provide medication. So, we had to get some clarification around that. It does not impact our students leaving the state, it's students coming from out of the state. Um, so, we have worked through that, um, I've talked with Adam about it to make sure that we were clear about that, um, and that was, that was my big concern about, because I had changed with incoming students into Massachusetts. Um, effectively, it's made it more difficult for students from outside of Massachusetts to come in, because they, they must have a nurse to give medication, and that just doesn't, doesn't always happen. Um, you should, sometimes you'll have a, if they're not the parent, which is always the ideal, you'll have a, um, medical delegate who will give, you know, the noon time med or whatever that is, that's no longer allowed in Massachusetts. But it doesn't impact our students going out. We do have an out-of-state field trip, sixth grade, that is a longstanding tradition here, um, but that's the only trip that I know of in this building. That's out of state.
Until last meeting, we voted already to approve that.
We voted to, what we voted last week, last time was the idea of out-of-state, because we didn't have specifics on the particular trip. So, it's on the agenda again, Shannon, because we have more specifics about the New York trip, or just you wanted?
It, no, it was just, it wasn't, I, it was on the notes to have on the agenda, it wasn't from me.
Okay, so I'm not, I'm not clear as to why, because we voted the idea of out-of-district, out-of-state field trips. I would like to see what the, not, I don't, I don't care within the day what they're doing in New York, just the, what time are they leaving, what time are they coming home, how are they getting their situation?
You want the itinerary for that?
Yeah, but again, when I say itinerary, I don't, I don't need to know within the day where they're going.
They're meeting at the school here at this time.
Yep. Yep.
Why do I think?
I mean, it would agree to be at it, but I'm, that's not the important part.
Why do I think I have heard the itinerary?
So, because there was a, um, a parent in the, um, audience that spoke a little bit about it, like, I think there was potentially the date.
Did Mark comment?
No, no, it wasn't Mark, it was a parent, um, but there wasn't, at that point, I don't think there was a ton of specifics yet. She had some, she had an email on her phone that she was reading, but it. Remember, she stood up in the audience.
What are you thinking?
Me?
No.
Oh, I was just telling Shannon, I have to leave, I've got to get back to my kids.
Doesn't that make you do this?
Pick up, I understand.
I worked in a school once where people handled those things with sign language.
I told my kids nine.
But they also did it behind people's backs in the meetings.
And, and I'm just curious, and perhaps there are reasons I'm just not aware of, what difference does it make to us as a school committee? What time the bus leaves here, what time the bus comes home, for example. Uh, I don't care where they go, I shouldn't say don't care, but I assume they go on to Statue of Liberty or vice versa.
Yeah, that's what I, I don't.
Whatever they're doing there, um, but what difference does it make to us? It's a New York trip and it's standard, typical like what it's been. Why, I, I just don't understand the concern.
I actually don't think it is the same as it's been, first of all, but, um, but no, but I still get your point, um. I think it's a matter of just knowing that a group is leaving, you know, our school and what time they're leaving and what time they expect to be back, just so that we're aware
Thank you.
that it's happening. I, I don't think there's.
Okay.
You know, terribly much more than that.
Back, turn it around and say, it isn't our concern. And, you know, it's the principal and superintendent's concern to know what the program is. Um, the, of course, I can understand your concern because you are one person that ends up getting called when things happen or don't happen. Yeah, I mean, uh, whether or not it's your purvey to tell them that, you know, at, at five o'clock, they were supposed to be here or there. Like I say, it's, it's up to the principal and superintendent to, to govern program, um, but the other area of concern is when something isn't quite right, they call the school committee, they have the school committee frequently.
Yeah, possibly, and I, and I'm happy to entertain, like, getting a clear procedure in place and us deciding that that's the procedure that we're going to follow, if people want to change that procedure, um, I'm, I'm open to that as well.
I, I'd just like to make a motion, we, you know, we, uh, we vote in favor of the out-of-state seal trip to New York.
We did.
And just leave it at that, and have that be the end of it for us, and assume that we will be informed um, with a, a, a proper agenda or, or whatever.
So, we did take that vote, so that's, that's all said already. Um, and then if you want to further look at the procedure that we take for out of just. Um, and then if you want to further look at the procedure that we take for out of, just out of state um, field trips, um, I, we can definitely do that. I'm, again, I have no problem with that, so we want to bring that back up. Shannon, if you want to get us the information that you know of, that we have in place and, and we may need to tighten that up a little bit to be clear as to what.
For how we handle out-of-state versus, because typically, right, it's, for me, I worry like at the secondary level, if it's an overnight field trip, that's got a whole different procedure, but
Yep.
this particular field trip is out-of-state, but it is not overnight.
Right.
So, I mean, I can, I can create something if you want.
It just, that, that's the process that I've always known, so again, if we want to change that process, I'm, I'm open to that. Let's just get something so that everybody's clear what the process is, um, and then I'm happy to entertain that. Um, and again, in district, in state, it's not, it's, it's, it's nothing, yeah. It's just with these new recommendations of they need to vote for the out-of-state and let's just, let's just get it down on paper and get it clear.
To, could I ask to Mark's motion, I haven't a second yet, but to the motion. It was my understanding that when Mr. Burnett was here last month, he was gonna just, we need more information. I didn't realize we had taken a vote saying, yeah, go ahead with the New York trip. I didn't, I didn't recall that.
We okayed out-of-state trips. We just blanketly said we're supportive of out-of-state trips, like we, we were voting favorite of out-of-state trips. But we are waiting, there, we haven't gotten any more clarity on that.
On, on this particular New York trip.
Mm-hmm.
It's not happening tomorrow anyways, I suppose, but I don't mean to push the issue, but I, I agree with Mark that superintendent, principal, take care of the, the plan and, and certainly we should understand what's going on. Where are you taking the kids and something that's.
We can share.
Quite a place to determine what's appropriate for somebody else's kids, but it's up to them, I guess, but um, as a school committee, I, I just think this trip is fine. I, I think it's pretty traditional. If you want to wait till, to get next month, have another more discussion, that's fine. Just, I wasn't aware that we took a vote saying this particular trip's okay. I don't know what we need to.
I, I'd like to hear a report just so that, you know, we can say, uh, at another, um, um, committee, um.
So in supervisory committee meeting?
Supervisory committee, we can say, look what our kids have gone through. And, uh, I don't know that it's as exciting as a canoe trip, but.
I can tell you they are, the children are very excited to be seeing, um, the play Wicked as a component of this trip. Um, and being able to go to the theater and New York is a, a real sighting piece.
I saw that play and it was outstanding.
Yes.
Yeah. It use, it was, it was for many, many years. It was like the thing you did in sixth grade, and then for several years, we, it didn't happen, so I'm glad that it's back.
Even though it's not tomorrow, the trip's not next week, seemed like Mr. Burnett had requested that we vote in favor of it, if, if we were in favor of it, so they could line up buses, buses and tickets and I don't know what else they have to do.
Yep, we did.
Yeah, we did.
So that is done.
So Mark, he, two meetings ago. We voted last meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, and just for clarification, because I was curious, um, what Desi has on their website, by briefly looking this up, is more, um, concerning around student travel sponsored by school that is planned to occur between the hours of midnight and six AM. So that's where the timing comes in, so if they leave at five AM, it's probably best to have a policy around that and stuff. And it's saying, um, when there's that kind of travel, you know, make sure you're using a motor coach and not personal van and like those kind of things. So I think that's where the timing comes in of like returning, leaving and returning to just make sure we're staying in that.
Yeah.
So to answer that, we have modified this trip so that it, um, we are now doing a matinee of the play. So that will get us back within the actual day that we depart. We are no long, because I know that in previous iterations of this trip, um, it did, the return time was past midnight. Um, because there was different activities that were done and the play was in the evening, and so it really extended quite long. Um, we did both for cost purposes and, you know, really to appropriate for them. We have chosen to do this on a day where they, we would see a matinee, and so they would be back before midnight.
What time are they leaving?
I, I actually have sent an email to Mark to get a confirmation on departure time, um, because I don't know that off the top of my head.
Yeah.
But I definitely know that we, we modified the trip to ensure we would be back well before midnight.
Okay.
And I'm certainly in favor of having policies in place. That, I have no, just no problem with that. Take as long as it takes, that's okay. But this particular trip is already approved and good to go.
Yes.
Okay, good, thank you.
Yes. They are moving, they are moving forward with, I should say, they're not being held up by us. Let me just put it that way. I don't know what else is going on, but they're not being held up by us.
Okay.
Or they won't be held up by us. Um, okay, so we're now on to policy review and update, which sounds like we might be adding a one too. Um, so the first read, again, these are just the first time, so there's nothing more to do than just acknowledge that this is our first read on them. Um, for HF School Committee Negotiation Agents, JLCC Communicable Diseases, EBC Emergency Plans, HA Negotiation Goals and HB Negotiations Legal Status.
I make a motion to move those all to second read.
Okay, I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. All right, so this is our second read and final vote for deletion of the CBC Superintendent Decision Making Policy and H Negotiations. So this is.
They will be no more.
They will be deleted from our bot- policy, um, second read and final vote. Okay. Um, it's just interesting pha- phrasing, um. So, does anybody have, um?
I move that we, uh, have second read and final vote for deletion of policy CBC and policy H.
Any other discussion?
We need second.
Oh, sorry, second, thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and then, so the final vote on EFDD Local Meal Charge Administrative Policy. Need a motion in a second.
I'll make motion to accept EFTD.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right, so this will, um, comes to the end of our agenda. Our next meeting, as we just discussed earlier, will be on April fifteenth. Uh, policy will meet at six thirty, regular school community meeting at seven. That is our regular scheduled meeting. We did not have to change that date. Um, at this point, we are gonna adjourn from open session to go into, move into executive session for the purposes of, um, in accordance with open meeting law, uh, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A. We're moving to executive session to discuss strategy with, with respect to collective bargaining. We will not go back into open session, but Dan wants to say something before we do that.
Oh, just a word before we go, uh, these tablecloths and the banner, I'd like to thank Paula Betters at the Senior Center and administrative, uh, coordinator, administrator Brian, uh, Smith.
Towne Minister, yep.
For town administrator for putting this together. It wasn't all me, it's just they put it together. And these were not paid for by tax dollars. These were from, you have a cable bill, there's a little bit in there that goes to this public stuff, and that's where it came from, it's not off the tax rate at all, so just so people are aware.
Excellent.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Sorry. Thank you so much, Dan. Thanks for spearheading that, and thank you to those other two people, Paula and Brian. Um, okay, so we will, uh, roll call, we will end this, uh, at nine eighteen. And we'll roll call into executive session. Uh, uh, sorry, I need a motion to go into executive session.
I'll move.
All second.
Oh, it's getting late. Okay, uh, we'll roll call vote to do that, how about? So, um, Bailey, aye?
Mark, Black, cee, aye.
Bailey, a little aye.
Dan Hammack, aye.
Okay, thank you, um, and we'll see everybody next time.
Have a good night.
And I'm gonna leave everything here.
Are you? Does that door gonna shut?